This conference will now be recorded.
Clerk, please start the recording. Today is Wednesday, February thirteenth, two thousand and twenty-four, and I'd like to call today's city council meeting to order. If we could all please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Clerk, may I please have roll call?
Yeah. Councilmember Fox. President. Councilmember Casper.
Here.
Councilmember Boyle.
Absent and excused.
Councilmember Leah.
Here.
Councilmember Servini.
Present.
Mayor Strobin.
I am here. Barely. Clerk, can we please call up any public comments from the audience?
Yeah, Kimberly Goheen Elbon.
It should be up, no?
Is it on now? No? Oh, it is? Well, okay. Doesn't sound very loud to me. My name is Kimberly Goheen Elbon, life citizen of Clark County, Washington. Lived here where my mother was born in La Center. Citizens must listen to FM Radio one zero one point one and AM Radio eight sixty and nine seventy daily, and please discern for yourselves and compare what you hear on the radio and what the regular media is putting out to the people. For instance, criminal Inslee, Washington State's trader, made a one hundred and fifty million dollar error, and it relates to our hard-earned tax dollars. They are overspending to accomplish the agenda to weaken America for a one-world order government. Make sure you remain a free-thinking citizen and not one who thinks our government rules over us as we, the people, actually rule over them, and that's what my call to duty is, to equip citizens as to how to gain control of our elected officials as our forefathers warned us, they warned us, to do when government has turned tyrannical. We have American citizens that are homeless and struggle to help. We struggle to help them, yet treasonous criminal Joe Biden has allowed twenty million illegal immigrants to enter our sovereign borders. These illegals are told to vote blue for the Democrats, diluting our already corrupt voting system. They receive hard-earned tax dollars for Joe Biden and the United Nations World Order Agenda, and we must assemble en masse to stop this takeover. I'm not in favor of this letter for the monies being trafficked among government officials, the letter that wants more money for homeless, as I know exactly what Vancouver is doing with it all. These people in the government had made millions of dollars on the homeless monies that were supposed to go to homeless. Yet on King and Eleventh Street, a couple of weeks ago, I was the first on scene to a tent fire. That whole place could have gone up, but I called, the police came, the fire department came and put the fire out, thankfully. But also, I looked at the porta potties, and I wouldn't send a cockroach in there to use them. They were filthy, and up to this day, and that was two weeks ago, they have not received any new porta potties per my request. We cannot give any more monies to our government, they're using our hard-earned tax dollars, and we can't even help and house our own veterans. That's a disgrace. People need to wake up again, it's my duty to do what I can to have people wake up to this delusion that everything's looking great. Look at all the building going on. I'm telling you right now, we better not have illegal immigrants here in La Center, Washington. I know we do in Clark County, but frankly, I can't trust anybody that I don't know that doesn't really care about us, per se, and they're still getting our hard-earned tax dollars.
Kimberly, can you wrap it up, please?
Yes, thank you. Do listen to the radio. So this letter really, I don't think we have any business, so maybe we should find out what the business is, why we have to write a letter like that. And that's about all, other than, on this, the WSP. I've looked on their site and I've looked on our paperwork here. I have no clue what WSP stands for, it used to stand for Washington State Patrol, but I don't think that's what this is. So is my three minutes up, or did you?
It is, yeah, but I was giving you a time to finish.
God bless America.
Thank you. Clerk, can we call up any more public comments from the audience?
Al Fila.
Al Fila, one five two West fifteenth Street. Well, today's Happy Valentine's Day. It's Ash Wednesday, by the way, too, which is the first day of Lent. And, of course, last time was Mardi Gras, you know, party, party. All right, I woke up this morning, and I wasn't gonna get up here and say anything as citizens' public comment, because I figured, well, it's a nice short meeting, there's nothing on the agenda, there's nothing on the consent agenda, you know, so just, you know, shake things up and just not push a little notice over there and not come up and say anything. But, as I said, the consent agenda, there was just a little bit of stuff on there. And lo and behold, this afternoon, all this stuff comes up there. You got three hundred thousand dollars going to WSP, you got this, that, the other thing. And, you know, one of the big things about, I preach to you guys about doing your due diligence. Well, if you just, if I just find out about, when did you guys find out about it? And how come we're not discussing it? You know, just put in this consent agenda, vote on it, and, you know, nobody's the wiser. You know, I think that's, that's really, well, I don't like it. And most of you all already heard this before, you know, so I think there should be some discussion when you're talking three, four hundred thousand dollars. But, oh, well, that was my concern. Oh, thank you all very much, God bless America, it is what it is.
Thank you all. Brian, can you address the WSP thing real quick, please?
Yeah, happy to. So there are two contracts on the consent agenda for planning services with WSP. They have been our consulting planners for the past several years. We did go out for proposals here at the beginning of the year for planning services because the previous contract with WSP had been extended for, I think, at least five years or so. So we have these two contracts, they basically replaced a single contract that we had before. I requested that WSP break them into two contracts, one for our comprehensive plan update, which is a two-year contract, and then another for on-call planning services, which is an annual contract. The comprehensive plan contract was largely covered by grant funds that the city is receiving from the state for update to our comprehensive plan, the required update that is due in June of next year. I think there's about a fifty thousand dollar delta that the city will kick in using our funds to cover that contract between what we're receiving in grant funds and the total amount of the contract. The other contract for thirty thousand dollars for on-call planning services will again largely be covered by reimbursable agreements through developers that are submitting applications for development. On the next consent agenda, too, just for council's awareness, we will also be having a on-call planning services contract with Dowell, which is another planning consultants. They were our second-ranked choice of the, I think, five or six proposals that we received. So we're planning on having multiple consultants to be able to choose from as we continue our planning work here. Is that satisfactory? Any other info?
It is to me. Does the council have any quick questions for Brian on that? I just wanted to be aware, so if there was any more questions out in the audience, it was good to.
I'm not sure what that stands for. We give them a hard time that they sound like they're the State Patrol, but.
Okay, well, thank you, Brian, for that explanation. Clerk, can we call up any other public comments from the audience?
Yeah, last one, Dennis Hill.
Dennis Hill, thirteen sixteen West Alder Place, La Center City Council, mayor and citizens. I'm in favor of trying to obtain a national endowment for the arts matching fund grant. However, since we are still operating the city in deficit, in the deficit, I think the council and mayor should consider what amount of city funds should be appropriate towards this endeavor. Fifty thousand seems a little high to me. Second item, since the city's income is less than our expenditures, what actions has the city council and mayor taken to actively pursue cutting slash reducing city expenditures? With our new police services coming online with the Clark County Sheriff, we will be seeing monthly expenditures increasing because of the police services. I think the city needs to find ways to offset this increase in expenditures. Finally, as the city formally signed a contract with the Clark County Sheriff Office to officially be our city's police force, we were told there were still some final details to be worked out. Your response to my comments would be most appreciated. Thank you, and God bless America.
Thank you, Dennis. Clerk, are there any other public comments from the audience?
No.
Any public comments from those calling in? Please press star six to unmute yourselves. State your name and address for the record. Are there any public comments to be read? There are no requests for any items to be removed, may I have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
So moved.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded, all those in favor?
Aye.
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 Opposed? Abstained? Motion passes, thank you, council. I do want to address a couple of those questions, Dennis, and so the sheriff and I are still working out the details. Commander Sample, sitting behind you tonight, has been in the city since January twenty-second. We do see officers patrolling. I was made aware last night that there are officers answering calls for the city, the sheriff's office. We have not signed any formal agreement as of yet, but we are diligently working on it. I also want to wish everyone a happy, or no, Happy Valentine's Day.
Yeah.
It's, yeah, my wife, she's not a fan of Valentine's Day, so we don't really celebrate it, but I know there's many that do. So Happy Valentine's Day to everybody. And then I do want to remind people, there are people in society that have mental issues, and if you know these people or see these people, I can only ask that you would help guide them to some help, right? After the recent shootings that we've had in the last few days. It's very, very sad. And I think we owe it as a society to help one another out in those times. That is all I have for tonight. I will turn this over to the attorney. Bronson?
Oh, thank you. Not a lot of news on our local level tonight. The receiver at our favorite subdivision filed a motion to terminate the receivership. So that's good news, it's wrapping up. On the state level, you might be interested in a House bill that recently passed the House, and that's House Bill nineteen thirty-two. And what it does, it allows cities and towns to pick even years as the year that council members will run for their office. So right now, you run for office in odd number of years. And the voter turnout in odd years is about half of what it is in even years. Because even years, you have state offices on the ballot, and sometimes you have presidential races, which brings out voters. So the bill passed the House. It's in the Senate Committee on Government and Elections. They're having a hearing, let's see, February, I think it's the eighteenth. Sixteenth, February sixteenth, so two days from today. If this bill passes and becomes law, the way it would work was on your next election cycle where you run in an odd year, your term of office would be three years instead of four, which would bring your reelection, if you decided to run, on an even year. That makes sense? So let's say you're up for election in twenty-five. In twenty-five, you run, you win, your term would end in twenty-eight, and the election would then be in twenty-eight and get you on an even year cycle. And after that, the term would be four years again. So, but this proposal, this law, if it becomes a law, is a local option. So you can vote it into effect through the passage of an ordinance, or you have the option of referring it to the voters. So you would draft an ordinance, it would be put on the ballot, and be up for voter approval.
Interesting.
Worth seeing what happens with that. It's House Bill nineteen thirty-two.
Is it showing favoritism in the Senate?
I don't know what the temperature of it is in the Senate.
All right. Interesting. Any questions for the attorney? Ready for a three-year term?
We'll have to discuss that.
All right, next up is council, thank you, Bronson, appreciate it. Next up, council comments?
Hi, good evening, hi, good evening, I'm sorry, I cut you off. Let's get the show on the road. I got a honey dinner to get to. Yeah, just happy to see everyone here, just, yeah, light agenda tonight, just good to check in with the city, check in with what's going on, and love having, you know, two meetings a month. I think it's a really good amount to, you know, touch base with everyone and, you know, email in between then. But, yeah, a couple of weeks ago, we had the opportunity to, a lot of us volunteers, I just want to thank the Planning Committee, Amy Chase and her daughter Elise, who helped organize the volunteer group where we, my boys and I got to go out as well and planted a bunch of donated daffodils around La Center and the city worked with us where we could plant them. So if you see this spring, when you see all of them around the Wheel Club skip, my boys and I did all the way on there. So when you see all those, just, we have a local farmer, I cannot think of the name of his farm, and it's killing me, but he's got one right there on the line of Woodland and La Center, but Tulip Farm that they donated. So I hope to make this a every-year thing, because he gets a lot of extra bulk. So instead of letting him go, we can, you know, donate him to the city, and then we can plant, and just adds nice. So if we could do it to the roundabout, too, maybe in the future or something, even though I didn't want to go out there, so I was okay with that. Anyway, thank you for all those volunteers that came out, it's just gonna be a beautiful spring. When I do my runs through town, it's gonna be nice to see them all, so, yeah, that's all I have to say.
Thank you.
Still love La Center.
Thank you. Councilmember Casper.
Thank you, good evening, everybody. I didn't really plan on saying anything, so I'll keep it short. La Center Sports is doing really well, I'm not sure exactly when the next game is, but we went and saw the basketball games last week, they were exciting, so we can be proud of that. Last weekend was the close of the La Center Little League registration. Little League registrations across the districts are down because of, you know, travel ball and things like that that I've talked about before, but we had two hundred and twenty-five kids register, which is almost a hundred more than last year.
Wow, that's great.
Pretty impressive, yeah.
Some people are asking, can you still sign up, even though it's past the deadline, are you still taking?
Yes.
Okay, because I see people commenting and saying, okay, so people ask.
Yeah, they've had plenty of notice.
I know, I know, that sign was beautiful.
Yeah. No, especially T-ball and girl softball, they're really looking for additional players, so, yeah. All they have to do is contact them by email.
Okay.
What else was I gonna say? I think that's it, thanks for coming. Hi, Phil.
Thank you. Councilmember Leah.
Well, speaking of the legislature, I try to keep up on that, which is impossible, there's too many laws trying to be passed. But my concern with House Bill nineteen thirty-two is because I always pick my favorite candidates and I run around and campaign for them, and if I'm gonna campaign for myself that year and try to campaign for, you know, whatever president and that, that makes that a lot harder, but I do agree that more people do vote on the year that's presidential, so. Anyway, we'll see what happens with that one. Another bill that they tried to pass was Bill five seven seven zero, which would raise our taxes, could top it out at three percent rather than one percent. It's been one percent since nineteen ninety-seven, and so that would raise it to three percent. So I got ahold of a lot of friends and we, I emailed our legislator, John Braun and Orca and Urbano, and said that I was against that, and it did not pass. And I found out the reason it didn't pass is because the person that wrote the bill ended up pulling it because there was such a huge, huge pushback on that. So I was glad to hear that. And so just encouraging people to kind of, it's really difficult to keep up on all the legislature, but at least pick some, maybe that would be your favorite bill, and let your legislature know whether you're for it, against it. And you can't even have the opportunity to speak if you want, but if that's not your thing, then at least email. And the other thing I've been really excited about is attending all these art meetings, and it's, the last one I attended, there was like twenty of us there. So it's very exciting that we do have a lot of artists in this area, and it'll be really, just really neat when we get that going, and it's gonna just, it'll take time, but we're working on it. So I'm excited about that, and thank you for everyone that came here tonight. I know the whole council appreciates it when people come and try to keep up with what's going on in the city. And take your turn to speak and let us know. So thank you for coming.
Thank you. Councilmember, can't even talk to that, Councilmember Servini.
Thank you. Welcome, everyone, once again, great to see you. And I'd just like to reference our upcoming Monday, February twenty-sixth, from five thirty to seven PM, the question, persuade and refer free suicide prevention training. And it will be at the Holly Park Community Center. Dinner provided, if you register in advance, you can do that online. It's posted on the La Center United Facebook page, and I believe it's also on the La Center Community page. So there are a number of different places that you can access it. But it's an opportunity to really to learn how to recognize the warning signs, how to intervene, and where to refer individuals, and just how to be more helpful for our youth and anyone struggling in our community. So please, please, get engaged and get involved where you can, thank you very much.
Thank you. All right, we do have a staff report tonight. That's the Public Works and Community Development Staff Report. Mr. Brian Cast will be presenting, Brian?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, good evening, council. We had our first snow event debrief, and we have all the costs and stats on that that I wanted to share with the council. The total cost for the city's response to that snow event was twelve thousand eight hundred and eighty-three dollars and seven cents. Told the mayor I could get it down to the penny. That includes.
What was that number again, Brian?
Twelve thousand eight hundred and eighty-three dollars and seven cents. That includes two thousand gallons of brine applied to our streets for de-icer, about six to eight, we don't have an exact amount of gravel applied to our roads, and seven hundred and eighty-five miles of plowing. Now that spring seems to be in the air, we are doing some spraying work in our parks, pre-emergent spray to prevent weeds from coming up later in the year. Over at the wastewater plant, we had a couple of mines that froze over there that were repaired as a result of the cold weather. And we're also now into our annual preventative maintenance program that was included in the two thousand and twenty-four budget for our blowers and rotary screens. Also, we have one of our Public Works employees, Zach Messner, starting half-time down at the wastewater treatment plant to start to work on getting his certifications as a wastewater operator. So Jay, the supervisor down there, has put together a thirty-sixty-ninety-day training plan, and he is in the process of starting to learn how to operate the plant. For engineering, we are just wrapping up a application with our grant writer for a. for a $4 million grant for the Colt Fourth Street and Breezy Creek Culvert Project. There is some federal funds that are coming through WashDOT through the Bryan Abbott Fish Program that we are targeting with that. We also understand that federal grants that for culverts projects that we applied for and worked successful last year is going to be opening up again. So we'll plan on pursuing that as well again this year. We are also working on the final right-of-way acquisition for that project. We just got the packets in, staff are reviewing those, and then offers will start going out to property owners along that corridor to buy the remaining right-of-way necessary for the sidewalks and other widening work that we're doing out there. I also wanted to note that we had a new code enforcement officer, Mike Connell, start up this week, Monday, actually. So we're looking forward to him bringing his 20-plus years of law enforcement experience to the city as our code enforcement officer and starting to, you know, enhance that code enforcement program. Onto community development, a few projects of note. Number one on the map, the Lockwood Meadows subdivision, paving was complete on that. Nice weather we got about two weeks ago. They are in now for final plat and working on wrapping up construction out there. Number 37 on the map, Ace's View subdivision, we also received final plat materials for that. They're changing the name from Ace's View to Urban Meadows. So we'll be changing that on our sheet here shortly. They're a little bit behind Lockwood Meadows as far as construction, but plan on paving that fairly soon here as well. Number 65 on the map, the Peterson subdivision. We received a preliminary plat application for that. We're currently in technical completeness review. That came in as Peterson, as pre-app. It's also having its name changed to the Larson subdivision. And finally, number 61 on the map, the Vineyard Vista subdivision. That's another one that came in for pre-app a little while ago and is now has a preliminary subdivision application that's, has been submitted. And we have returned technical completeness review to them. They need a couple additional materials that we're, they're working on pulling together. And then we will be scheduling hearings for both of those projects, the Larson and Vineyard Vista.
61 is Vineyard Vista?
Yes.
And how many homes exactly are in that again?
Vineyard Vista has around 84, and Peterson was 47.
What about Larson?
Oh, Peterson slash Larson.
Oh, okay. That's why I was confused. I was like, you changed the name. Got it. Okay. Nice. Okay, thank you.
Happy to answer any questions.
Before you get to any questions, I do want to let the council know that even though we have official grant writers now working on behalf of the city, the grant that Brian has been working on with staff and such and these grant writers is very time-consuming. I'm not sure how many are familiar with grants, but they take up a lot of time. They require a lot of information and a lot of meetings. I want to say, Brian, there's been no less than six, seven meetings, no less. And they last a little while. I wanted to tell you guys this because of the appreciation of the amount of time that the staff is putting into this grant. We also received a letter of support from the Kowalski Indian Tribe for this grant. It's been a lot of work, but it is also a large chunk of the money that we need to finish that project.
Cool. Excellent. Good job, team.
Thank you.
Yeah, it's great. It's like a long scholarship process.
Yeah.
Yeah. It's basically, yeah, yeah, yeah.
Any questions for Brian?
Thank you, Brian.
Thank you, Brian. All right. We do have the National Endowment for the Arts matching grant. Maria swinger Enskeep is actually not feeling the greatest, so she decided to attend from home. Maria, are you with us?
I am. Can you hear me?
Yeah. How are you feeling?
I'm good, thank you. I'm not coughing currently, so I can speak. Good evening, Mayor and Council. I did want to add on to what Councilmember Casper was saying about the sports team.
Maria, we can't, we can't hear you, Maria.
Can you hear me?
That's better.
There we go. Much better.
Okay, okay. Thanks, Laura. I'm loud and clear now.
I think you need to speak deeper into the microphone. Again, we're picking you up kind of, but I just need to be a little bit closer with the microphone.
Okay. Is this better? Better?
Little bit. I couldn't have.
I think it's good.
It's better? Okay, thank you.
Okay, okay. I just wanted to add for Councilmember Casper had mentioned about the sports teams, that tomorrow there is a state send-off for the wrestling team downtown at 1:30 in the afternoon. So if any community members want to join in, we'd love to have you come downtown and send the team off. So tonight, we have a matching grant request for the National Endowment of the Arts. And the La Center community members have organized a nonprofit art group called La Center Arts. And the goal is to help develop, inspire, and collaborate awareness of and appreciation for the arts in all forms. The National Endowment for the Arts is offering grants in different disciplines. And our art group is applying for the visual arts discipline, and the grant ranges from $10,000 to $100,000. If this grant is awarded, the funds would be used to create visual art through Outlet Center in forms such as sculptures and murals. You'll see in the staff report some various ways that the art can be presented. And so the ask is for $50,000 that will come from next year's budget. And just to address Dennis's concern, we will also be able to use private donations and in-kind funding. So if our time and our effort, our hours, and some of our, our city supplies can count towards that, it doesn't all have to be $50,000 cash that we're giving and some other various sources to make up that money. The deadline for the grant is in two weeks, and we will find out this fall if we are awarded. And if there are no questions, you'll see the recommendation on the screen.
Any questions for Maria?
Maria, I was having a little trouble hearing, but did you say that the $50,000 that the city would chip in would be, come out of next year's budget?
Yes, that is correct. And I do apologize. I'm not sure why the sound is poor tonight.
But you were also saying that $50,000 would be, part of that would be donated money or money that would be coming from other areas, not just all city funds, right?
That's correct. Like our man-hours or our time or maybe some city supplies that we are using can go into that. Like if we were using city paint, we can count that towards the $50,000.
Okay. Oh, but you're not actually exchanging.
So if that $50,000 cannot be raised, do they then lose their $100,000 grant?
They would, I think, I believe they would only match up to that amount that we can provide.
Yeah.
Okay. But if we don't raise the $50,000, would they lose their portion of the grant?
If we were only able to provide $45,000, we would get $45,000. An additional $45,000.
Makes sense. Yeah. Any other questions? Do you want to converse amongst each other?
I am not a fan at all of matching grants. I think it just, it puts too much burden on the entity that's applying for it and the, you know, whatever government agency is out there. I don't want to say anything against the worthwhileness of the project. I think it's, I think it's definitely worth it, but I would, I would encourage them to find a grant that does cover that funding. I'm not a, I don't, I'm not a fan of the matching grant.
And you're saying it's just, in general, matching grants are not a great idea?
In my opinion, yeah, yeah. They, they tend to create problems because if it is, you know, what, then what happens the next year? How, where does the money come from to maintain these art projects or, you know, further the program? If the matching grant goes away, then, then where do they get that, that funding from?
But isn't that any grant? I mean, you gotta stop and think about that, even like the sheriff's grants and stuff like that that I've seen out there. They go away. You still have to figure out a way to maintain stuff.
Correct. But they're not, they're not matching grants, though. The ones that, that we use, and those are being used for one-time funded projects.
Some of those are actually for man, man-hours, bringing in new officers and such like that. The cities are left out to figure that out.
Maybe some, some cities do that, but I haven't been part of that.
That's what I just want to clarify.
Yeah.
I think we have to be careful in terms of our matching grants and where we look to meet those, that funding. And as we all know, we're in significant financial shortfall at the moment. So there's pluses and minuses on, on everything that comes before us. Matching grants are actually how Fourth Street and Aspen were paved and the sidewalks were brought into La Center. So they aren't always bad or negative situations by any means. You just have to look at the long-term feasibility and what it brings back to the community. And I am a staunch supporter of art, so I would be the first to jump on the bandwagon in full support of this. But I think our timing is just a bit off right now, unfortunately. And, you know, it's a hefty amount when we're looking at potholes and, and street issues and sidewalks that are buckling and, you know. So we just have to kind of weigh where we're at and where we need to be and what we need to do and when. So it's always difficult. That's my, those are my thoughts anyway.
Any other thoughts?
I don't, I don't know enough. I'm taking your guys' feedback mostly. I mean, I don't have a lot of experience and, no experience in writing grants like that or even, I mean, I hear your concerns and what you're saying, and I get it. It's like, nice art should go up last, you know, when you're looking at, okay, I bought the house, I did this, did the landscaping, took care of the driveway. Now I put in art last, you know, and like you're saying, Liz, we got other landscaping and, and, you know, things to maybe look at, but yeah. How does that work if you don't get the 50? I mean, if you try really hard to raise the money and you get 40, how does that look? Did they say, well, you didn't get it, and then now you just walk away, you tried? Is that one of those things, you can at least try to shoot for it and see how much community involvement you can get? And then if it's a bust, then it's really not a huge deal?
Well, the matching funds in the past have always come from the reserve funds.
Okay, so eventually the city would make up the difference. Okay.
So the city would be looking at that and in terms of the backfall, whatever you wouldn't be able to.
Okay, that's, yeah, that, that part I don't really like. So, yeah. I mean, it'd be one thing if, we can say we could get it all donated.
That's the whole purpose originally, what the reserve fund was for, was for matching grants that we could leverage. And that's how the majority of the CDBG grants that we were awarded were obtained. You know, the transportation dollars at the federal and the state level that we were able, and even the parks, the wetland park, the Little League parks. All of the different investments that we made over the years came from those reserve funds and those matching grants that we could leverage and make a lot more pay.
Yeah, yeah, sure. But it was, yeah. But what it was offering was, yeah, you're saying is a better benefit. Whereas arts, like, should we be focusing on that right now? I see what you're saying. Yeah.
And I think when we get further down the line with bringing in more business, we can come back to this and look at arts and, you know, combine with the cowlets and the historical aspect and tell our story together in a, in a way that, that works with everyone involved, the new businesses and the old, to make it more of a cohesive approach as we move forward. It's just right now, it's, it's tight to, to look at that, that chunk of change and, and feel totally comfortable about moving forward right now.
Yeah.
I want to add something in. Can you hear me?
Yeah.
Okay. So just for clarification, sometimes when you're doing these grants, you have to show that it has been approved by council. And we're, you know, we're 10, 11 months out from actually starting anything. So just a reminder, this has to be put in our 2025 budget. So you will have a chance again to come around at the end of this year and say, yes, we want to do this, or no, we don't. Because we could get awarded this a grant in November, but then at that point, you say, we don't have the funds for this. You know, we, you know, our outlook, we were in a deficit this year or whatever, or maybe we were in a surplus this year. And you say, okay, we do have that. But if this, but if we don't even apply for this grant, we don't even know that we have a chance for it. So that's just a little different perspective. We can always change our thoughts down the road and say, okay, we withdraw. We got the grant, but it's not something we're going to have to match for. It's not setting us in stone. We're not, you aren't signing a check tomorrow that we are going to do this. This is just for us to apply for this grant.
Okay, so we apply for the grant, we have till the end of the year to decide if we can actually.
This money has, this money will be approved in our 2025 budget, which we have not done yet.
Okay.
What do you got, Brian?
I just would also chime in here, you know, it's, I would say fairly common that any sort of grant funds have some sort of match requirement, but those matches don't necessarily have to come from local funds. They can come from other sources of grants. For example, the, the federal grants that we've been applying to, you can only get up to 80% of federal funds to cover a project. So you gotta either, you know, come up with that remaining 20% out of pocket or with other state or local grants. So that's, you know, like the Fourth Street project, for example, we're trying to get that 80% federal and then get 20% local funds. And you can kind of match grants with other grants to reduce the cash outlay. And it sounds like this is something similar where this $50,000 could be, you know, some sort of local grant or some sort of donation or other. So, you know, I would anticipate that staff will be looking for other sources of that $50,000 to, to make this match requirement prior to next year's budget.
Does the grant require a municipality to give this approval? Or, or can they go to, is there other entities that can agree to, to agree to match the, whatever funds they're requesting?
So I'm not.
The municipality does not have to, okay, sorry. The municipality doesn't have to be the one to give the funds, but we're the ones that are putting in for the grant. And so we are the ones that are presenting that, that we will gather the funds. But like they say, it said in the staff report, it could be private donations or, you know, cowlets could come in and say, we want to, we want to give money towards this. So it, but it will not be $50,000 out of our pocket. It would, it will be less than that. And we will do whatever we can over the next year, along with La Center Arts Group. Are actively applying for grants as well.
What, what?
And I have to.
Sorry, Maria, go ahead.
And, and we, we will get better as a staff, just remembering that this is all new and, and, and give a little bit more backstory and history as we're presenting these things. And Mary, you were saying the dollar amount for what?
Yeah, no, I was gonna ask the, the council, what dollar amount would they be comfortable with if $50,000 is too high? If any.
I guess I just, I didn't understand that it was the city applying on behalf of the La Center, what are they called?
Arts Foundation.
Arts Commission or La Center Arts. I guess that's what the name of the, of the, I don't even, I don't know who they are. Who are they?
So Dan Masterson, and he's, he's spoken before, so he- So he is our city representative for the Arts Commission. And so the city does have a tie to that group because we, we have picked him as our representative and he is, serves on like a county board. And then Dan has helped to create a local arts group as, as Councilmember Leah has, has spoken about and she started attending meetings as well. So we are just, this is one way to revamp arts in the city.
Okay, I, I remember when Dan came and spoke and I'm looking at one of his cards right here. So, okay.
Yeah. I don't see any harm.
Well, I don't think that it's a, I mean, it's a worthwhile cause. I don't know if there's a.
Maria, will we also be approaching the community foundation for grant, potential grants from them?
I, I think my, again, I don't, I'm not a big fan of this type of a, a grant, the way this is, this is written up. I think some other, it does fit in some circumstances, not particularly this one. I just think it's too early for us to give a dollar amount when it's way too, we're not even going to start doing this budget process until late summer, early fall.
But it does give the staff enough time to start investigating the local area funding mechanisms that could come in as the additional funders.
Yeah, that's what I was going to say.
So what is the motion that we're looking for?
And the budget cycle actually starts in May. We'll start having meetings and such like that, then before it's presented to you guys.
Well, I haven't been invited to that part, so I don't know about it until later. Is there a motion that we're supposed to make or?
Yeah, there's one right there. Yeah.
Where?
I recommend a motion to approve the cost share.
Oh. Yeah, no idea.
Okay. Does anybody else have any questions? Well, I did, well, I didn't know if he had something, he didn't see it. I just wanted to see and see if he had anything else to say.
Through all the problems.
We have another chance to look at this again.
I'm caught up.
Okay. Okay, I recommend a motion to approve the cost share match of $50,000 from the NEA Visual Arts Grant on behalf of the List Center Arts.
Second.
It's been moved in second. Do I need a roll call on this one, Brunson?
You don't have to, you can, it's not required.
You know what, actually, I think it will. Can, can I get a roll call vote on that, clerk, please? Thank you, Brunson.
Councilmember Fox?
Yes.
Councilmember Casper?
No.
Councilmember, Councilmember Boyle is absent. Councilmember Leah?
Yes.
Councilmember Servini?
Motion passes. Thank you, council.
Good discussion, everybody.
Yeah, no, it was a great discussion.
I learned, yeah, I learned something.
Thank you, Maria.
Thank you, Maria. Thank you, staff, for your diligent work done on that. Next up, council, do we have any unfinished business? Council, do we have any, do we have any new, new business?
Wish everyone a merry, merry, happy Valentine's Day.
I did that earlier.
Merry Christmas.
All right, can I get a motion to close the meeting, please?
So moved.
Second.
It's been moved in second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained? Motion passes. Thank you, council. Thank you, everyone, for attending. I'm telling you, I'm stumbling tonight, like left and right. It's been a long week.
Yeah.
Yes, sir.